Across the state of Texas. And so we certainly have, in my opinion, the best board in the state. And so I certainly want us to honor them and the great work that they're doing. One of the things that you must always realize about a school board member is it is an unpaid volunteer position. And they give of their time, their heart, and they are truly servants for our students, our staff, and our parents, as well as our community and Prosper ISD. So we would like to honor each one of you. We have a video that's before you that's playing, and we certainly want to make sure that you have time to see that. But we have some stars of the show this evening that have some performances of our very talented students for this evening. So Mr. Allström?
Ask Brandon Holt, Director of Bands at Prosper High School, to introduce our first performer. So the first, actually two people that you're going to listen to today are actually all-state musicians. And to give you an idea of what an all-state musician is, out of 70,000 students that are auditioning, beginning kind of in November, going all the way to this point, 70,000 students are auditioning. About 300 spots as an all-state musician in the state of Texas. And being named an all-state musician is something of the highest honor. It's less than 1% of the entire population of ones is being auditioned for. So this is a huge honor, and we're so excited to be able to send one of our students from Prosper High School, and actually two students from Rock Hill as well. But the very first student, I want to introduce you, is a Prosper High School student playing clarinet, and our very own Mr. Devin Pham.
Nice job, Devin. So Devin is actually a two-year all-stater. Last year, he did not get to go to the state convention because of COVID. This year, he gets to go to San Antonio with us and all the music teachers. So also two-year all-staters, Mr. Elijah Leonard, come on up, Elijah. You can get all situated. Both gentlemen are seniors. Elijah, I started on trumpet at Rogers Middle School in sixth grade. I was his trumpet class teacher. And all the other Leonard's as well. So they are both preparing for college auditions, and they both aspire to be music performance majors. So here is Elijah Leonard. Notice there's no music. Everything's about to play, but never.
Now I'd like to introduce our last performer and her teacher. This is Mr. McGuire from Rock Hill High School Choir.
Always regretted when I last came in with what I teach. I have the privilege of introducing Sarah up here. Two things I think are really fun about Sarah Compton. First of all, she's a transplant from Idaho. And I auditioned her when I was auditioning everybody online back in 2020 from Idaho. So, you know, already she's making an impact just by being my first to do that out of state. Also, Sarah is one of our many choir members at Rock Hill and in PISD that is involved in everything. She's a member of the orchestra program. She's a member of our choir program. She's a member of the district champions, women dive team at Rock Hill this past weekend. She was also selected as one of our 3-2 PHS Rock Hill students selected to region choir this year. But she's going to do something completely different for you today. Dr. Ferguson and several people here have the opportunity to come watch our kids perform in their first dinner show at Rock Hill this past weekend. And so I think this is fitting, you know, district like ours, this is Big Little Taxi by Johnny. Make Yellow Taxi. And if we really think about the lyrics, I kind of think it kind of basically is Prosper.
Sarah and Elijah and Devin, thank you so very much. I think that we all owe you a standing ovation. That was impressive. Also need to thank you for coming on a Monday night to a school board meeting.
Absolutely.
So there's that also. And thank you to Mr. Holt and Mr. McGuire, too. Certainly none of this would be possible without highly skilled teachers and directors who pour into our kids with everything that they have. So thank you.
Absolutely. Fabulous. Yes, I too took trumpet in sixth grade.
And how'd that go?
I took it in sixth grade.
Understood.
It's about as far as.
So I now call this meeting of the Prosper Independent School District to order. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present, that the meeting has been duly called. Notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 5, 5.1. I've asked Mr. Beaver to lead our invocation, please.
Certainly. Please pray with me. Father, we thank you for this day and thank you for everything that you've given us. And Lord, we just thank you for blessing us with so much talent here within our district. Father, as we saw this evening, students that you have blessed with talents of the arts. Father, we get to see students that you have blessed with talents athletically. And constantly, we get to see students that you have blessed academically as well, Lord. And so we just thank you and give you honor and glory for that. Father, this evening, we pray that you would be with this board as we weigh out the different decisions that are before us tonight. We ask for wisdom and discernment as we look at those. And Father, we ask that you continue to keep your panda blessing on Prosper ISD. Thank you for bringing everybody back to us safely from Christmas break. And now we just ask that you give us a great semester and great evening. And it's in your son Jesus' name that we pray. Amen.
Amen.
So rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. It's on to you, Dr. Ferguson.
So we have our enrollment update. And just to give you where we are currently, 22,303 on the report that I sent to you. Just for everyone's knowledge, when we returned from our break, we were at 231 students added into Prosper ISD across all campuses. And that was in one day that that happened. So we were fast growth. And what we have seen in the past is 2,500 students, kind of on the average, coming in the last several years. But we hit an all-time record high. We have added in from year over year, 2,640 students.
My goodness.
So lots of opportunities have landed in Prosper, is what that means.
It's about four elementary schools worth, right?
Well, possibly. We're not going to bring that up.
That's how I think about it. In terms of elementary schools.
Wanted to provide you an update on our class size waivers. And with growth and additional students comes waivers that need to be submitted. As I've shared in the past, what we're doing to address that growth and that concern is posting for paraprofessionals to help assist teachers that are reaching into that 23, 24, all across the grade level. If you'll look on the chart that I've given you, we saw the increase, which it's nothing different than what our demographer is telling us. So we have 15 at Bryant Elementary, 22 at Johnson Elementary, 12 at Light Farms, and then 19 at Windsong. So you can see kind of where that growth is really hitting harder than other places. As we've discussed, we've got terminal zones, which means there's no more homes being built within those school zones at some of our elementaries. So we won't see as many waivers that are happening in those areas. But obviously, fast growth in many of the pockets of Prosper ISD. And I know that we've put some postings up, too, to add teachers mid-year as well for different programs and then classrooms, too, just trying to find them. But just like everybody across the nation, trying to find a teacher right now is challenging. But our principals do a good job of recruiting and then fighting over the recruits because they all seem to recruit the same teachers. So, good stuff.
Any comments, questions on that? Okay.
Construction updates. So we are on schedule for Joyce Hall Elementary, which is located in the Star Trail subdivision. And then our other projects, I'll show you the pictures of where we are. They're moving along very nicely. The lack of rain, although we need rain, is working in our favor, certainly, on these construction projects. Any questions about Joyce Hall Elementary? Ms. Hall is extremely excited and can't wait for the ribbon cutting. So we're very excited to have her name on the side of one of our school buildings. Walnut Grove High School, located on First Street, are 600,000 square feet of greatness to be completed in 2024. So you can see we're making progress. Parking lots to go along with Sarah's song. The trees are gone and the parking lot is there. Unfortunately. So fortunately or unfortunately, however you look at it. You see the baseball diamond, softball field starting to take shape back there as well. So comprehensive high school with all the bells and whistles headed to us for the home of the Wildcats.
Fabulous.
Any questions about either of those construction projects? All right, very good.
Very good. We have one sign up for open forum. Mr. Hublin? Herbland, did you have an agenda item you wish? Okay, we'll have your speak at that other part. Fabulous. Thank you, didn't mean to mispronounce your name, sorry, Mr. Herbland.
We have a few items on the consent agenda, so we need to look at the minutes from December's meeting. And then we actually didn't have any budget amendments, so we won't need to take action on that item. Any questions about the minutes? And those were provided online for view as well.
No, if not, we can go ahead and move to accept the consent agenda, which includes the board minutes, since we don't have any budget amendments this month. Take a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Jana, you second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Kelly. All in favor? There we go.
Okay, on to education. So we don't have an action item, but we do have a presentation. This is the Texas Academic Performance Report, which gives us an overview of how they performed academically, graduation rates, the breakdown of how many teachers and kind of what years of experience they have. So Mr. Shirley, our chief academic officer, will present this information as required by the state of Texas after receiving the report within 90 days. I will let you know, the one thing that is always a little bit of a slow burn with any reports that we get from the state or the federal government is you're looking usually about a year in the background. So, and I know that he'll point that out as he's speaking.
Right. So I know that you've had access to this information. And I'll try and get through it as quickly as possible, but there's a lot of detailed information in here. This report is in a dynamic fashion online at the TEA website. And we also post a PDF version that the state issues us online. And you can find those here at these websites.
Mr. Shirley, if we have questions, do you want us to hold them until the end? Or you want to?
Jump right in, Mr..
Okay.
These reports, the ratings that we received, the A through F, they're based on two years' worth of star scores essentially. And so we did not take star in 2020. So they really couldn't give us a letter grade, although that we did take star tests in 2021. So every district in the state did not get a rating for the 21 school year. Our special education determination status was that we met requirements. Let's talk about our students and the category of their ethnicity. When you look at the comparison from our district to the state, we look much different than the state breakdown. We are becoming more diverse slightly every year. The students by the indicators listed here, I highlighted those that we see a significant difference between us and the state. And there's not anything here that's surprising the economically disadvantaged, English language learners, Title I, and students that would be considered at risk. Students enrolled in these instructional programs, the bilingual ESL. Our population is much lower than the state. We see an increase with the gifted and talented. And although it seems like this should be so much higher, the special education numbers, we are slightly lower than the average for the state in our district. So this slide here, what you're seeing there with the gray is, this is star results. And that's the approaches level, students that meet the approaches level. The blue is meets, and then the green is masters. So this is all tests, like third grade reading all the way up to high school, US history. We're going to throw all those together and come up with our averages. What I don't have here in this slide is the comparison to 2019, the last time that we took a star test. And I think that's been the big question throughout the year. How much did our kids slide? And generally, for this, the all grades, all subject, it was right around that 7% at the approaches, 10% lower at the meets, and 9% at the masters. But obviously, our students here, you can see in the third column is the district. We're performing much higher than the state level. And then the second column is our region, Region 10, the schools in our area. As we look at the reading, slight dips here, 6% to 7% in each category from 2019. The third grade, again, very similar. We saw a significant dip with our African-American students at the approaches level in comparison to 2019. Fourth grade falls right in the same category. However, the meets and masters didn't really dip as much as it did with all the other grade levels. Fifth grade, we saw some dips in the meets, about 16% drop there. And then pretty similar in sixth grade as well, a dip with the meets. Seventh grade reading, slight dips there, but definitely a comparison to the state level. We're about 22% higher for the meets. So our students are performing at a much higher level than those in the region and the state. And similar with eighth grade, the dips that we have in the overall average. The high school scores are less severe, really. With the English I, it was about a 2% drop in the approaches, the meets, and the masters. And believe it or not, in English II, we improved. Scores went up with the approaches and the meets, and just a slight dip in the masters. When we look at mathematics, again, the colors changed a little bit here, but the blue is approaches, the yellow is meets and masters. This was probably the most severely impacted subject in regards to scores dropping. Overall, we saw about a 9% drop in approaches, 16 percentage points drop in meets, and 14 in masters overall.
Is that consistent across the state or is that country? I'm sure it's everywhere.
Absolutely.
It's actually worse at the state level, what they were saying.
It is. And there's parts of this report, the region is worse than the state. So.
One thing to keep in mind, too, when you're looking at this data, in 2019, we had the consistent, right? We had a typical normal school year. And then we had in and out the door constantly. So the minute that the pandemic would ramp up, parents wanted to pull kids back into their homes or they would want to push them back into school. And we did allow that. And then we had students, it was about November of last year, because we had students that had selected to stay home, but were yet doing nothing at home. Teachers would get a black screen, you know, where I'm not going to participate, but I'm here, but not really participating and engaging. And then the grades were dropping. And then we were able to get those students back into in-person learning because of the lack of performance. You have to also consider that when you have all students coming in to test in 2019, those numbers are going to move your percentages one way or the other. And the year that we have the other data point, we had about 5,000 of our students sitting out in virtual learning and about 15,000 of our students sitting in person. You see the difference in high school because what happens at high school is all the extracurricular pieces plus that social dynamic. And so the kids were actually coming to school at the high school level. And we did see that at the middle school level as well. Elementary, there were a lot more students that were out. But the fact that English I and English II, which are two of the EOCs that we continue to struggle with, and they're extremely difficult to get kids where they need to be, we actually did better than what we typically have done. And I would say that that's probably because the lower number of students being actually in the school setting and then teachers just being able to really get down deep into where they are and what needed to happen. Because we had to hit the accelerator pretty hard, especially when we brought the kids that were failing, that were out in virtual land, not getting support.
And even with that, the students that we had in school, they were also in a classroom where the teacher was instructing students that were online at the same time. So it wasn't back to the traditional in-person learning that we're used to. With third grade, we saw some pretty significant drops here, especially with the meets. Not so much here with fourth grade. Those were pretty slight comparison to the others. Fifth grade continues to be a concern, the reading, the math, and we'll get to the. Fifth grade continues to be a concern, the reading, the math, and we'll get to the science as well. Sixth grade numbers dropped. Some slight changes here with seventh grade. The, the number of students that scored in the masters category actually went up 17%. And this was a, the comparison was in 2019, we had students that were in seventh grade honors, if they were in seventh grade honors, they actually took an eighth grade test. So, those numbers looked a little lower than what they should have. And then, if you were in, in eighth grade honors, you obviously would take Algebra 1, so there's a little wonkiness in this, because our eighth grade numbers look really low, but those students that are, took the eighth grade math test in 2021, these numbers are just straight on-level or resource students, they don't include honors kids. The honors kids are taking the Algebra 1 class. And then, the Algebra 1 numbers, especially the approaches, was pretty close to where we were at. Writing, we saw some slight dips here as well. 2021 was the last year that we will take the writing test, so fourth and seventh grade would be the only years that we would take a writing test. They're going to incorporate more writing into the other test, and not have a standalone writing test. The sciences, we saw, this was, this subject along with the social studies, we saw a less of a dip in. Here, it was 5% approaches, 11 for meets and 7 for masters. The fifth grade was much higher than that, but the eighth grade, really, it was 3% to 5% drop that we saw there. The biology was 1 to 2, just pretty level across that. We also had an increase by 2% in the masters with biology. And then with social studies, this is probably where we performed the best, the approaches remained the same at 90%, we went up in the meets and slightly down in the masters. Eighth grade was, was pretty much level, with the exception of the, the masters that went down. And in our U.S. history, they went up in every single category, so we actually improved. So, with that, I mean, some of this all looks very overwhelming and doom and gloom, but our teachers are, they're not having to juggle the in-person and the virtual anymore. Most of our students are, with the exception, I would say, less than 200 students are in the virtual setting right now, and they are killing it every day to help close these learning gaps that we have. And they are all aware of the results, they are all aware of the individual results for the students that they have, and so, they are doing their absolute best to help overcome this learning deficit here. The S A, SAT, the average score was 1117, that was, it was down a little bit from 2019, but we went up in ACT scores, so that was up just a little bit there. Our four-year longitudinal graduate, graduation rate, so this is our COVID, the first year of COVID 2020, those students that were at home the last nine weeks, that graduation percentage was 98.4. We had 1.1% of our students that were continuers, those that didn't meet the number of credits and continued, or that could have been a special education student that hadn't completed their IEP that was going to continue as well. We had a half a percent that fell into the dropout category. The five-year longitudinal graduation, that was 99.4% of our students graduated. We had one that received their high school equivalency, 1% that were continuers, and three tenths of a percent that were dropouts. The sixth year was 99.8%, and then, two tenths that were dropout. The annual dropout rate for our seventh through eighth grade students in the 2020 school year was 0%, and then the 9th through 12th grade, that school year, it says 0%, but that's because of a rounding, and so, that was really three students that fit into the categories that are listed there. And with those three, they all still mean something to us, we're continuing reaching out to those students to get them back into school and get them graduated, or, or get them a, a high school equivalency. The college career and military readiness, the specific categories here, the, the light blue is the college career and military ready, if you met the formula for that. The orange is college ready, and then, the yellow is the career or military ready. With that, that's not to say if you did not meet the criteria that you can't go to college, or you wouldn't be successful in a career, there's just specific requirements and, and equation that comes in to a formula to come up with these stats here. But they did, they did increase from the 2019 results. We also track the student performance in post-secondary institutions, so this is specifically the 2019 graduates, and what we have to do is average their GPA from the fall of 2019, the spring of 2020, and the summer of 2020, and these are for students that entered a Texas public institution, so a four-year or two-year, so those that maybe went to a private school, they're not included in here, and those that may have gone out of state, they're not included in here as well. 2019 P H S was our only school, we had 681 graduates of the four-year public university students, more than half were in that 3.0 or higher, and then, in our two-year public colleges, more than half were in that 2.5 or higher. We also have to report the violent criminal incidents. Here, we had 10 incidents of controlled substance or drugs, 15 incidents of fighting or mutual combat. Teachers. The ethnic distribution that we have in our district, again, looks much different than the state and our student population. We are becoming slightly more diverse each year, though. The years of experience, the change that we saw there was an increase in that, really, that six to 20-year range there, we saw an increase there, a slight dip with the 1 to 6 years. Also included in this is a link to the P E M's financial standard report. I can assure you that Dr. Penn can explain that much better than I can, but here is a link to, to that report, and that is all I have unless you have questions.
I have a couple, I'll try to combine them, though. From an administrative level, what, what is our overall assessment? First, thank you for the report, it's, it's very good information. From an administrative level, what's our overall assessment of the district based on this report? That's the first part. The second part is, district-wide, could you talk a little bit about who sees this report, who it's shared with? And then, the third and last part is, how do we use this data? It's great data, it's great information, but how do we use this?
So, I can tell you that, you know, our assessment of this information is that learning loss was real, it, it did occur. I think parts of it, we weren't impacted like other, other places, and I think that's because of the education that our students had prior to COVID. Who uses this information? All of these folks are out behind me, every single administrator, they all have access to this, in their professional learning committees, they are meeting with teachers, they, they all use this information, and it's used to the level that they're having individual conversations about students. This is one test, it's one assessment, it's one piece of information that we use, we use many more, but it is a piece of what we talk about on, on a daily basis when we are meeting with kids.
I appreciate it, that's it for me.
Great. Other questions or comments? Dr. Ferguson?
Just the unfortunate part of a star test is, we refer to it many times as an autopsy, because the school year has already gone by, the students move on to the next group of teachers, but they needed that data, so we've always said that really that, that information should come at the beginning of the year, we should test kids at the beginning of the year, the state needed real data and information, and then we use that to move through, but as to Mr. Shirley's point, we have multiple data points that we use, common formative assessment is one of the best tools that we have to really check in, where are kids learning and how are they progressing on the special education end, constantly doing data points, looking at where they are, collecting data, making sure that they're making progress towards mastery. So, it's more the day in and the day out than it is the test at one day at one time, but it does matter, and we certainly do look at that information for our kids.
Great. Other comments or questions?
Thank you, Mr. Shirley.
Thank you.
We'll move on to business, so we have the financial investment report, Dr. Penn will re-present.
Good evening, we'll review the financials from December of 21. This is the investment portfolio divided by funds. See the difference with 419 million in for our December? The primary difference between years right now is the bond funds, between the differences. The next slide is the same information, but presented by where the money is, so same, same total dollars divided by the different institutions, still the, the low interest rates, you know, which helps us when we refinance our bond, we talked a bit on the audit, but on the other end, some limitations there. This is the investments by fund, the general fund is in the box, just looking at the general funds, comparing between years, and that's also just another graphic showing the difference between bond funds between years, and that everything else is pretty, pretty comparable to what we've seen in the past. Revenue increased by, by source, so starting off, this will show up a little bit more on the other slides, with the, a lot of our taxes coming in in December and January, some of that revenue is starting to come in, and so, that's the primary differences we'll see this month. And so, just one example here, so our 61% of our revenue in, whereas last month, that was at 26%, and that's primarily with, with taxes coming in, same thing, yeah, on, on your, on, and you're, you're just seeing the local, the local funds pick up. Again, tax collection, so a lot of that came in December, pick up in January and February, and then that'll, that'll trail off for the year. Those, another reference point, that was at, the current levy was at about 7% last month at this time, so. Ag roll back, coming in at 536,000 for the year-to-date. General fund, major expenditures, again, you can see most of our budget is, is on payroll, taking care of everybody, keeping schools running. 34% of the budget today, athletics is doing well. 314,000 to the positive for the year-to-date. Food service is sustaining itself, so it's, we'll talk a little bit about that in the audit as well, you want a little bit of fun bouncing there, but we're limited on the amount, so it's sustaining itself, though, 7,000, over 7,000 this time. Debt service, right now, 42, almost 43 million in there, that is most, with the taxes coming in, but we, the debt service payments will be in February and August every year, so those payments will go out this month, we have collected revenue for that, and then the other half will be, the other portion will be in August, so that's where that cash flows up for, for this month. And then, just the, the financials for the, for Hall here, with 10 million spent and 14, 14.6 remaining on Hall, and 34.5 spent on Walnut Grove, with 166 million remaining on Walnut Grove. Questions on December, I know you're used to the format, you're probably more used to the format than I am right now.
Yeah, used to that format. We've all had a chance to review the numbers. So, let's, we need a motion to approve the financial 21.
Make a motion as presented?
Thank you, Bill, second?
I'll second.
Deanna? Deborah? All in favor? Okay, perfect, then we jump right into 10B.
Yes, we've got an agreement between Prosper I S D and Cooperative Purchasing Agreements.
Is this a new co-op?
I believe it's to kind of broaden what we have, so we've got Aqualis, City of Frisco, and then the Central Texas Purchasing, so it's just going to give us more latitude to be able to work with different groups, and obviously, including buy board, and that just gives us a little better option when we're looking at the different prices that are out there. So, it's just kind of widening our, our set, our net of what we can go after when we're looking at purchasing, especially with the increase in prices on, well, everything.
Right, everything, okay.
We do this every year, don't we do this every year?
Yeah, I, I just don't remember, recognize, I didn't recognize that one when I saw that name, so.
No, these, I think these are new.
Yes, they're new, that's what you're approving.
But they work the same as all the other.
Right, right. Okay.
Well, I guess I'm, no, go ahead.
No, I was just going to ask, are there items specific to each one of these co-ops? Are they all-
Like what we're purchasing, or?
So, I know the Aqualis, and, and I'm getting caught up to speed on it, but I know the Aqualis is popular with Region 10, and that gets us a lot of local things, and then the City of Frisco is an opportunity for a graduation facility that would be required to partner with them.
My question is, is this an, just an open-ended resolution, or is there, like, is this an annual, or is this until further note? How does that apply?
I'll step in.
Hey, you stepped in.
I'm on that.
Most of these will partner on, where, once we join them, we're a part of them. Sometimes they have a fee, I think, I believe two of these are free, and one of them may have a fee, but you can, you can join, you're not even required to buy them. Buy, you can join them and not purchase anything, it just means that we can, we can utilize them for current roles.
Thank you for that.
Very good.
Any other questions?
Hearing other questions, I need a motion for 10B.
I'll make the motion.
All right, Mr. Wilburn, is it second?
I'll second.
Okay, I got Deanna that time, all in favor? Great. Okay, audit, the audit report, fabulous.
Our finance committee had a chance to be able to sit down with the auditor and Dr. Penn to review our audit, and so, we wanted to make sure that we were sharing this with the entire board. You should have received your packet information electronically, but also the folder that you were provided, and Dr. Penn's going to walk through specific highlights, but certainly, if you have any questions, to be able to engage with the finance committee, or Dr. Penn, or myself, we're glad to answer questions.
Yeah, the audit committee did not do the highlight version.
They did not. Yes, I, I wanted to start by thinking-
Did not do the highlight version.
The audit committee, or the finance committee, Mr. Bridges, Mr. Cavender, and Mr. Wilburn for meeting last week, the three of us and our auditor, Dr. Ferguson and Ms. Sees, met for a good length ago, an in-depth review of this 80-page document, and so, I've tried to pull the highlights from there, if anybody in the committee feels that I left out a highlight, let me know, I know the board's had this for a little while to review, if you have any questions, be open to that, and, and even beyond, beyond today, if you have questions, I'd be glad to, glad to review that with you, but did want to try to get some of the highlights tonight. So, page nine, this is the only, only page in the, in the audit that will compare kind of year to year, and so, you can just kind of see the differences anywhere in there between the two years, that's the, kind of how page nine is going to function, which is neat, definitely with the, with the growth to see some changes. 18 and 19, this is really, we'll, we'll publish this in the paper, this will go on our website, this is really kind of the meat of just the big- This is really kind of the meat of just the big overview of the district. And so it'll show our revenues for the year of 194 million, expenses of 187, and then coming in under budget at 6.6 million. So, uh, that 6.6 is line 1100, kind of a little bit below the middle. That shows kind of where we were above for the year. Um, at the board did approve to designate 12.2 million last year, um, to be in the local construction fund. This was used for technology, uh, the business portable, which we appreciate it, thank you, um, the Mayhard property. Um, and, and I think there's still some funds available, but, and so that for the net for the year would show a reduction in the fund balance of the 5.5. But I do want to make sure to emphasize that it came in under for the year, which some of it was designated. Um, and so, and that transfer of that 12.2 is in line, uh, it looks like 89, 11. And then, so that results as the fund balance of September 1 as 1.108 million. That is equivalent to 180 days of operating for the district for the year. Um, 75 days is our minimum for the first rating, which is the finance accountability that was presented on last month. So we always want to make sure to do that. Um, definitely with the growth and the way our years look so different year to year, um, it's great to have some extra fund balance. So, um, that's very, very a good thing. That is the general fund, that left column under number 10. Uh, these, um, continued, um, the middle column of debt service and then the, uh, construction. So debt service is paying the bonds. We've taken out the bonds to build the buildings. These are making the payments, the equivalent of paying your mortgage. Two big things last year, authorized new debt, um, for construction, and then there's a bond refinance. And so, and that'll show up a little bit later on. Um, but the bottom of that, the bottom of that page, that middle column on page 18 shows a 14.9 fund balance in the debt service fund, which is also a good thing when you don't know what property values are doing year to year. You want to keep some fund balance in there, so that's very strong as well. Um, and then the bond, bond construction. So there are the expenses in construction and then the new authorization. And that leaves the fund balance a little under 19 million there at the bottom of column 60 on page 18. Uh, there is a note in here we'll talk a little bit about, but new debt was authorized in September of 2021. So that is not in this audit, um, but it, it's noted in the audit, but it's not in this number. So the, the, the money that was authorized right after the end of the fiscal year. Page 34, um, we include tax collections in the audit, even though we have very limited control over people paying their taxes. It is in the audit. Um, there is 100.99% collection of the levy. Um, that part over the 100 is based on, uh, prior year's taxes that are collected, so. But that is a good tax collection, uh, rate. 36 and 37, um, so on the bottom of 36, I did not put this number on there, and I should have. On the bottom of 36, the paragraph next to the very bottom, it's really a important thing. And I know you know this from when you did the refinance, but it's also really great to emphasize every time the bond refinance that was done in September of 20, is a refunded debt savings of 15.5 million. So a little bit of process when we have those opportunities to approve that. Um, but definitely opens up capacity, um, and saves the district some money going forward. So I wanted to make sure that is noted in there. Um, but that's also, so if we move over to 37, that is that series. Over the life of the bond. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That's the, the series 2020 refunding. And so you can see that on the, the bottom of those, uh, tables on 37, where you see the, the next to bottom line where it says the tax refunding series and then the tax billing bond series, which was the other piece that's authorized. And on those top four or five lines, you can see some of them were zeroed out. So that's paying off the old bonds and reissuing the new ones at a lower interest rate. I'm going, I'm, I feel like I'm going a little fast. I'm sorry.
You're good.
Doing okay? Questions? Okay. Page 51, the highlights here, so is basically that there's no negative variances, uh, meaning that we did not, uh, exceed what the board, uh, authorized or adopted. So, uh, board adopts at the function level. And then if that has appeared to the, to be exceeded from that, then we would have to do a budget amendment. And, uh, and we did not exceed anything that the board had adopted there on page 51. Um, so that's a good thing. Just wanted to highlight that, that we're staying in budget there. 64. Is, these are all of the, um, federal funds, uh, or the non-major federal funds. So most of them, you'll notice there's no fund balance. What that is, is we're authorized to spend a certain amount, primarily we pay people with those. And then we get reimbursed from that and that's it. There's not really carryover. We use that. That saves us some money on the local side and allows us to do some things we might not otherwise be able to do without some of those additional funds. Let's just kind of run through those. And then on 66, uh, if you'll turn the page, it's kind of the same idea with some state grants, um, on the, the page on the left. And then, um, on page 67, under the 461 column, those are the campus activity fund. So that's all of the campus, uh, student funds from all the campuses combined there. 70, page 74. There's a number of programs, um, that students can be enrolled in that receive weighted funding. The district receives extra funding, um, for that because of the expense that it costs to operate those programs. Um, and then through our account coding process, we spend money back into those programs. We show, we receive money for this reason and we're spending it for this reason. Um, some of them have 100% threshold required back, but a lot of them are about 55 or 58%. Um, this is, this, those programs have been around for a long time, but this, uh, reporting of these two particular programs in the audit is new. Um, it's a state template. It is why it looks a little different. So the compensatory education program and the bilingual education program, um, both of those, we met what we needed to spend on those. Uh, it doesn't say 55% is what's needed, but that is what's needed. And so we're meeting, meeting those requirements on those programs, but that is a new audit addition this year. And then, uh, page 80, this is if we wanted the, uh, the cliff notes or the highlight reel, you could just skip to page 80. It just highlights that there's, it's an unmodified opinion, which means it was a clean audit. There's, there's no findings, uh, no material weaknesses, deficiencies, uh, which is, which is what you want. That's the end goal that we want there. Um, and so good, clean finding there. Um, and then just before I close, if I have the opportunity, can be my first time up here with you guys tonight. Spent a lot of time looking at a lot of the public records on the district prior to coming here. And it's, as shown tonight in this, um, just a lot of good decisions and responsible handling of the funds for a long time. Um, and you can tell that from an outside, and I mentioned that in my interview, whether I got the job or not, I wanted people to know. Like, it's been a really good job for a long time, um, making sure to kind of build s- sustainable practices and be able to go forward. So I just want, you know, if you haven't heard that from somebody that spent a lot of time looking at it from the outside. Makes a good job, and it does not happen if not everybody's on the same page, kind of with the same purposes. So just wanted to share that tonight while we're up here talking about this.
Thank you, Dr..
It's great to hear, yeah. Okay, so you. You met and went over this. Anybody have any questions or concerns about this?
Page 80 is the important page.
Okay, anybody? Well, if not, we do need an enter, we need to entertain a motion to approve the 2020, 2021 annual audit.
I'll make a motion.
All right, thank you, Kelly.
I will second.
Thank you, Drew. All in favor? Great. Okay. Okay, Mr. Herblin, thank you for your patience. Let me, uh, you can certainly come up there. I've got to, uh, I've got to read this little thing, so you can stay seated while I do that. And apologize for mispronouncing your name. I'm sorry. Um, all public comments at a regularly scheduled meeting should be limited to school, district, governance, and operations. If you have a specific concern related to an employee of the district or a specific student, you're encouraged to utilize the district's grievance procedures provided in board policies, FNG, DGBA, or GF local. Please note that the board cannot comment on any item that is not on the board agenda for this meeting. Pursuit to Prosper ISD board policy, BED local, audience participation in a board meeting is limited to the portion of the meeting designated to receive public comment in accordance with that policy. At all other times during a board meeting, the audience shall not enter into discussions or debate on matters being considered by the board unless requested by the presiding officer. Um, skip this because it's not applicable. Um, as presiding officer of this meeting, I've set the overall time limit for our public comment to three, uh, minutes per individual. So, Mr. Herblin, that'd be three minutes for you, and we'll start that when you get up there and start speaking. Since we have just one tonight, I'm going to make sure that I'm reading something that doesn't make any sense. Uh, finally, I think it's important to address the board's expectations for decorum during this public comment time. While the board certainly encourages members of our community to speak about any school governance or operations topic during public comment. And while we know that no one approaches the board unless they care deeply and passionately about the matters they bring before us, we, we ask that each speaker conduct him or herself in a polite and civil way while addressing the board. And the board will certainly show each speaker courtesy and respect while he or she is speaking. And we simply ask that each speaker show the same to the board. I hope this would not be a problem, but should any speaker disregard this request and become a disruption to our public meeting, I'll be forced to prematurely end that speaker's time at the podium. Thank you in advance for observing these expectations, and the board trustees appreciate your active participation in the school district. We certainly do that. And, Mr. Herblin, the floor is yours. We will start the three minutes.
It won't take that long. Thank you, guys, for letting me speak to you tonight. I know we're in a time of, um, really trying times, and I know you've been given a list of books. And I've seen that list, and I've looked at some of those books. And what I want to do is encourage all of you all to get ahead of the ball and not require that the parents petition you guys or the school district to get rid of some of these books. I've been literally appalled at what I've read, and I think you would be as well, and you may be. I'm not saying you're not, but I like to encourage you all to, to take a look at some of these books on this list. And see if you're not as, as appalled as I am. And, and I'm just stunned at some of it, and I'm, and don't think I'm throwing blame your way. I'm not. Uh, the minute they started reading these books to me, I, I was like, give it here. I cannot believe that's in there. And then I saw it, and that's when I thought, okay, it's time to do the right thing. And this is not a, a, a drawn-out process, I don't think. I think this is a quick read, common sense, and I don't mean a quick read like you got to read the whole book, or books. You just got to read a couple of pages, and it's, it's time to take some action. And I think your community will, will be just elated if you will do that. Thank you, guys, for your time.
Great. Appreciate you, appreciate your patience for waiting, too. Do you want anything you'd like to say in response to that?
Yeah, Mr. Bridges, actually, I, I do, and thank you, Mr. Herblin. I appreciate you speaking to the board. I do want to share with everyone, because I know we have people who are actually televised at this time, or they're sitting in the comfort of their own homes. Then obviously all of you, and I, I do want to speak to the response by the district to that very concern. Uh, because I don't know that this was shared other than with the Prosper Citizens Group. So Prosper ISD received a complaint from a political action committee about a list of 82 books out of the over 327,000 books in our school district libraries. School officials may not remove books from the school library simply because they dislike the ideas in the book. However, school officials may remove a book from a school library if it is not age appropriate for the children of the school. No educator in Prosper ISD wants obscene or otherwise inappropriate materials in our libraries. If we have inappropriate books in some libraries, we want to know about them. As we have made clear through our Prosper Promise Initiative, we want to partner with parents in making sure our children are receiving a stellar education in Prosper ISD. As such, we are reviewing the 82 books that have listed, uh, have been listed to determine if we have the title, if it can be checked out by the students, and if it is a book that we can immediately determine does not belong on that campus without the need of a formal review process. In an effort to partner with the parents who are part of the political action committee, or actually any parent who is wanting this, we would like to point out the following. Please feel free to submit the topics and/or titles to your school librarian that you would not like your child or children to have access to. We can set an alert on your child's account to honor your wishes. We want to make sure also that you're aware that you have access to all library book titles on your campus through your child's login through the PISD portal. And you have the ability to be able to pre-select books for checkout for your child, and they will be available for pickup in the school library at their convenience when they'd like to stop by and get those items. However, pursuant to state law and our district policy and practice, in order to conduct a formal review of an instructional material, will need a form submitted to know exactly what the concern is with the book. And for each individual book a parent has a concern with, so that the review committee will know specifically what is concerning about each book. The political action committee submitted one form with a list of 82 books attached, but did not include specific concerns about each book. We've asked them to partner with us in this review process by submitting a form of each book so that we're able to properly review whether it should be permanently removed from our school library, and we're more than happy to do that. I will say, uh, as a superintendent and obviously an educator of 24 years, when a concern comes up, the best course of action immediately is to connect with the campus. So if there is a book that is in question, any and all of our administrators are more than welcome to sit down and entertain a conversation. And with over 327,000 books, uh, there is always room for error. And we have gone through the 82 books, and some of those are no longer in circulation, nor were they in circulation, nor being checked out by students. Um, but if there is a concern with a book, I would encourage all, any and all, those in TV land or anyone who watches this video later, please connect with the campus. No one wants anything that is obscene or inappropriate for our students. It is about the education of our children and making sure and ensuring that they have exactly what they need when they come to this excellent institution of Prosper ISD. Thank you, Mr. Herblin.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Ferguson. Thank you, Mr. Herblin. Uh, now entertain a motion for executive session.
Make a motion.
Thank you, Bill. Bill? Deborah?
Second.
All right, all in favor? Okay, we have business to conduct an executive session, and we will come back out if you wish to stay around for that. You were, uh, any actions that we take will be taken in public. You're welcome to stay for those. Thank you, everybody.
And we are back from executive session. We have a few motions to make. First of all, I'd like to receive a, uh, I don't have my agenda with me, but, uh, what?
I have it.
What, just did the numbers right. Can I get a motion on, uh, 13A, approval of professional contract personnel to be employed?
Yes, I'll make the motion to accept the list of those that we're going to hire.
Okay, the conditional approval? Yep, perfect. 13A, need a second? Okay, the conditional approval. Yep, perfect. 13A. Need a second?
I'll second.
I think I heard Kelly first. All in favor? Great. Need a motion for 13B, consideration of possible action on approval of resignations received.
I'll make a motion.
All right, Mr. Beavers, second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Deana. All in favor? Perfect. Okay, then we had two more motions, I believe?
Yes. My move that the board approve the contract with Hillwood Development Corporation is presented by the administration.
All right, that's a motion. We have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Kelly. All in favor? And our final motion?
Yes, I move to approve the superintendent contract with terms as discussed in executive session.
Great. That's a motion. Need a second?
I'll make this.
Thank you, Mr. Wilburn. All in favor? Great. I need a motion to -- did I get it all? Did we get them all, Jen? Okay. Okay, I need a motion to get out of executive session?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Bill. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Jenna. All in favor? We're out of here. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.